Hosts me in order with the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Jamie Kendall.
Here.
Darcy McSwain.
Present.
Paul Jenderski.
Present.
Edgar Tidoff.
Present.
Michael Nesbit.
Present.
Kathy Harris.
Present.
And Lois Tyleys Epsom.
Any adjustments to the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Any announcements, public comment? Spicer Engineering Report.
Hi, my name's Neil Noack. I work, I'm at Spicer Group Engineering. Some of you are recognizable faces, but probably not to you. I work closely with Mitch Jackman and Mark Norton. Mitch couldn't be here tonight, so you got, you're stuck with me.
Alright.
You've got a map in front of you, so I guess I'll start with the Phase One project. Probably getting ready to wrap that up, probably eighty percent. Right now, I believe they're working on Saginaw and Chesnean Road doing water services. And then they'll jump to West Hosmer to finish out the water services. And that'll probably take them a couple of few weeks, maybe a month. And then there'll be a quiet period before we can get in and pave the cat B streets. We've been finding a decent amount of lead and galvanized, which is gonna lead me into, I guess, first off, do we have any questions on Phase One? So, the village also approved Spicer Group to submit a TMF grant, just technical managerial.
Financial.
Financial. Yeah, TMF grant. At no cost upfront, and it's sort of like a DUM grant, which we did to hydrox in the village. And that's to further help assist communities in understanding the material of their, their water services. With a few exceptions, on this grant, it's not randomized and it's not twenty percent. So, you can sort of cherry pick. Couple of the active eligible activities are, you're trying to target areas where there's likely lead, unknown likely lead, or you suspect there may be lead. So, it'll help further wrap our hands around.
How many more beyond the thirty-four did you find? A bunch of them? Is it like a whole, the whole road?
Say it again, I'm sorry.
Thirty-four galvanized or lead water services.
Out of the hundred and seventy-four that were hydroexcavated, yeah.
You said you found a bunch more or something?
Well, as part of the Phase One, we're also, we're also going through and replacing water services as we find all of the water services, but yeah, so.
Just asking, how many more did you find? A whole bunch?
I, yeah, probably close to twenty percent. Don, would you have an updated number?
The percentages were about what it turned out to be, but, I mean, once in a while, we'd find one that was galvanized we didn't realize it was, because they're only looking at on each side of the curb box, and then one we'd find, okay, was copper, there was a short piece of galvanized. I mean, it's just, you know.
Well, I just like wondered if it was the whole road when they were all done at the same time.
There wasn't whole roads, it was mix and match. I mean, like ballot was, we'd run into, there'd be random copper lines.
Anything older services, the one that they have.
It's, there wasn't really a rhyme or rhythm. I mean, who knows if there was a problem twenty years ago, they ran a new line. And record keeping sometimes wasn't, wasn't as well kept back then, but. All the, all the main is in the ground, so we just got some tie-ins to do, and then we're testing the last pieces in the old Saginaw.
Yep, pressure tested, I believe, and then just chlorinate and sample.
Yeah, the first sample will be pulled tomorrow morning on it.
So, all of that's done now? All we have left to do is what?
Finish up the services, water services on Saginaw and Chesnean, and then, and then pave roads, yeah. And, and West Hosmer services.
We've got a few tie-ins to do, the new main abandoned, a couple of ones, but.
So, you're gonna wait until the spring to do the paving?
Yeah, so they'll probably wrap up the services within the next few weeks and then.
I haven't been told, or Hosmer done, you saying?
Little bit of a lull. Hosmer is not, no, Hosmer is not.
Hosmer's probably a nightmare. The main is in the ground, the services are not done.
And as part of the, you know, as part of the DUM, we're still kind of plugging away at that, and on the asset management plan. Spicer Group, the village, and municipal analytics to kind of drive, figure out the capital improvement plans. Capital improvement plan and the projects that will come from the DUM, so, and the findings. Continuing to verify the in-home materials and so. That's all I got, so. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Council minutes approval for December thirteenth, twenty twenty-three.
I make motion, we approve the minutes of the December thirteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Communications, item A play in the parts. Looking for something to do in the county area. This is for you.
Who's bringing back the ice? Who's that?
No idea.
It'd be cool if there's like a curling term or something.
Yeah.
You gonna get some ice coming?
You doing ice rink though now?
I think I want to do the.
Thirty and, yeah, thirty and twenty-five degrees. No discussion, I don't know who. Payment of claims.
Got a question. Purchase of two twenty-three East Bell, isn't that where the, the old old folks come from, right down the corner behind Frank's?
Yes.
Oh, yes. So, the DDA purchased that.
For?
For eight thousand dollars.
Is it coming out of our budget? What is that eight thousand dollars?
That's the DDA budget. So, it's not.
And what is that going to, I don't get why it's a private claim. What, what do they do on it?
They're, they don't have specific plans just yet. We're gonna discuss that hopefully next month and try to figure out something. In the past, they've talked about a lighted pickleball court for the summer, and then make it a ice skating rink for downtown for the old fashioned Christmas.
It's not very big.
No. They wanted it, they.
They have stayed at like a quarter acre, it's like, no.
So, those are not, those are not.
Don't do it.
Village funds, those are DDA funds, so. They can suffer it, and they have plans to make more attractive to visitors and businesses and people, and try to make old, old fashioned Christmas better. Is their intent.
Swan Creek, James Township, St. Charles Water.
Water.
Sixteen thousand, five hundred and thirty, that's kind of crazy. And the waste authority, what, what is the twelve thousand, five hundred and five, we'd spend that much a month on that?
It's on tonnage and usage, yes.
That's a lot.
And other places are paying more, it's crazy.
The clean of the good rich building, is that just?
That's a DDA funds, but.
Okay, well, that's, is that once a month, or how's that work?
Weekly.
Weekly?
Yeah. State of Michigan is very, I don't want, um, they, they want to clean the place, and it's a safe place, and so bathrooms and things like that. It was being do, done by Sue. She is retired, so we're currently looking for somebody here, if you know anybody, that's trustworthy and needs a job. It's not a great pay, and we're happy to work with you and help you out. But, yeah, she retired, she moved on to pallet company and is making too much money.
So, Zoe's not gonna continue?
She'll keep doing the good rich, but she doesn't wanna do here, so.
One thing about that, person who would clean though has gotta have a clear background in order to clear back in our office.
I, I did say trustworthy, and they will have to pass lean, as we all do, to be here, yes. I didn't want to say it out loud, but yeah.
I don't blame saying.
They'll be snooping around the police department.
I'll make a motion to make the payment of claims for one hundred forty thousand, two hundred ninety-nine dollars and eighty-two cents.
Not supporting.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? New business?
Every January, we, well, in September of nineteen, prior to me arriving here, John Kizer met with Spicer and I believe it was Dennis at the time, to look at our water rates and our sewer rates, to see what we could afford to pay for Phase One and Phase Two, knowing that we need to upgrade our water system mains and lines. And so they came out, John is brilliant, he was here last year, I believe, like when the city of New York is in trouble with finances, he's the guy they call. He's out of Ann Arbor, he comes up here, we met, as Neil said, we met again last, last month, I guess now, looking at the rates. And in nineteen, if we had stayed with John's numbers, we, the village minimum bill would be for fifteen thousand gallons, right now should be two hundred and fifty-one dollars and eighty-three cents to, to afford what we're doing. But because of grants and budgeting, we're still at one fifty-eight, whatever it is, oh nine.
Well, it looks like it's going up to me.
Yep, so, John wants us to keep going, but after this meeting, I explained to him that people are at, like, this is finally the one that's kind of breaking the camel's back. I, I don't, people are on fixed incomes, elderly, on, you know, GM pensions, like, this is starting to hurt people, and I get that if we want to afford these things, we have to do something. But what can we do to make it feasible? I mean, water isn't free, you see that we have to pay, you know, Swan Creek, James, and the water authority sixteen thousand dollars.
Sixteen thousand, five hundred and thirty-one dollars and eighty-seven cents, and then you're looking at here, the water unit, boom, 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 every year it goes up.
Yeah, so in the city, he's raising their rates five percent every year for the next five years, four years. So, this is.
Everything else going up, I mean.
Yeah, and, and I, I was told that the, the village didn't raise water rates for fourteen years. And then they got caught because they weren't fixing things as well. So now, here we are fixing things, almost half, well, you know, one side of town is almost complete. Um, it's, and we're starting to talk about Phase Two and what capital improvements we can look at, and, and I would, I have a handout for you guys. When it comes to budget time, you know, I've asked them to push some things out to two thousand twenty-eight that I don't think we need right now, like. Manhole repairs, nope, push it off. Curb and line, pipe liner, no. I mean, it buys you time in the lines, but if we're replacing them, why do we need to extend it fifty years? They want a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a year for cure and pipe, no. Manhole covers, uh, ten thousand dollars a year, okay. You know, so we're looking at, you know, grants for things, we're looking at the revolving fund to replace the, you know, some things around town. Obviously, um, other, you know, pump stations are a priority, especially, you know, the, the, is it the Maple Street that's the most important? Yeah, I mean, so that's five hundred thousand dollars easy, probably one point two. So I just asked them to push some things out a little longer as we, again, we owe two hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars just for Phase One next year, and for the next eighteen years. The final year, we owe two hundred and ninety-one thousand on that project, and that's in, you know, eighteen years, so.
The, the engineer's report on the bottom, it's kind of cut off, your plans went off for bid January thirteenth or something, I don't know. The heck is that? Kind of cut off on the bottom, I can't read the rest of it.
That was probably a year ago. Some of that's old news, it stays out.
January tenth, twenty-four.
Oh, that's on, on, this is on Phase One to get there. So here we are, and, and I asked John to push that back, and I told him, people are at breaking point, and, and, you know, we understand we have to pay the city for the water, but I don't want to hurt people. Like, there's a human element to this. So, he worked with me, we designed it, again, like, we, he wants us paying two fifty-one eighty-three minimum, next year would be two seventy-seven. Twenty twenty-six would be three oh four sixteen, quarter.
Well, I don't get why it's saying for.
That's a ton of money.
Minimum sewer units, twenty twenty-four seventeen oh five, then it drops down twenty, or twenty-four, and then to twenty-five, eleven oh five, why is it, why is it going down? It kind of leveled off, then it jumps back up, and how do you, how do you predict?
So, we're, we're, we're basically trying to raise, well, by pushing this off, like, so we can go this whole year without changing the rates if we wanted to. It, it won't, and it won't hurt us. But then next year, we're gonna have to jump, and we worked it out, so it's gonna be about thirteen dollars and ninety-nine cents a year in the net for the next five years, which I think is doable. People pay that for their cell phones, their cable, their streaming services, I get that. Is water more important than that? Maybe not. But still, thirteen ninety-nine for five years is huge. Compared to where they want to be, we called all the other local municipalities, I'll get that to you as well, kind of comparables. John always says, don't compare yourself to others. Well, I'm going to, just to see where we're at, to see that we're affordable. You hear it's cheaper elsewhere, we'll prove it. Let me, and so we'll call them straight up, like, what are your water rates, where's your latest study, and they'll send them to Marguerite, it's pretty impressive. Uh, so this way, you have two resolutions, one to do the bare minimum to keep going up, uh, that thirteen ninety, which would be what, three oh six more, a, a quarter, which is a little, is doable. It's not the drastic ten percent every year for ten years that John wants. And this would lower the sewer rates a little bit. We'd use some of the excess cash in the sewer fund to help manage those rates, and water rates are finally set to meet the cash requirements. So, it went for a long time where the cash in was here and the cash out was here. We were paying the city way more than we were regular, and we're finally, after four years, almost even, which is the whole goal, I mean.
Do we have to make a decision this month?
Well, we tend to for budgeting purposes, so it gives us an idea on what we need to budget for water and sewer.
What is our ready to serve charge? That's the normal, standard, standard house, household size.
So, right now?
Yes.
Sixty-eight dollars and fifty-one cents. That's just ready to serve water, and, uh, ready to serve sewer is forty dollars and fifty-eight cents. And then, minimum is about five thousand gallons. So we thought, in the past, best to just always approach it in January, because we need to keep it on top of it, um, you know. Just so that we don't get caught, obviously fourteen years is, is a lot, we don't want to do that, but, uh, also for budgetary purposes, like I said. You need to kind of know what kind of money's coming in, and we guesstimate, and I'll give you the budget next month, I guesstimated about twelve thousand as the average gallons for the village as a whole. You know, some families are the minimum, some are well above and don't mind paying.
You had to have an idea of what the average is throughout the month, just add them all up, divide by. You saying it's twelve thousand gallons?
This is about the average, yeah.
I probably already know the answer to this question, but is there by chance any other areas where we might rather take some of that money and pay so that we wouldn't have to raise?
Well, it's a, it's a different kind of fund, it's an enterprise fund, they're self-sufficient. It's a business fund rather than like the general fund.
Yes.
So, it's a different, separate sort of funds that really, we can't use water sewer funds for general fund things or for police.
Okay, that's, I, I figured that much.
It's a different fund, yep. It doesn't mean we can't try, I mean, it looks a little, the auditors might have a problem with it, but.
I just think that, well, I don't want to do anything that's not legal either, I don't, you know, nothing like that, but, um, I just hate to see the rates keep going up.
Well, we can go one year at this one fifty-eight oh nine, the whole, all of twenty twenty-four, but then in January, we probably get, gotta go up to that one seventy thirty-four right out of the gate, which would be in January, not the May normal start like we would.
As, as far as you said, surrounding areas, what's surrounding areas? Because Chesnean has their own water, they don't have.
Right, and, and they want in. I wonder if, um, Marguerite's on that.
Because I know Sw- uh, Swan Creek Township, their ready service is forty dollars. Uh, they just got a water bill, and it was eighty-nine dollars. So, I'm not saying that they're putting the cost on us, but there's, that's quite a big difference. I understand that we have downtown St. Charles, we have a lot more that we have to pay for, maintain, upkeep, but when it comes down to all of us, everybody here that just has a house, that's a huge difference between, you know, eighty-nine dollars a quarter or, you know, whatever the minimum is for water. That's quite.
I can get that to you tonight, it's in my office.
I know, two years ago, me and Marguerite did a little study, and we were
We're still doing.
Pretty much on the low end, we were way cheaper in Chesnean, I know that, because.
Well, okay, but my point is, we, Chesnean doesn't have Saginaw water.
No, but that doesn't still.
They want un, they want un-Saginaw water.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't even put Chesnean as into this discussion because it's not.
We checked, I think, Richland and Thomas, we were. But like Swan Creek, their system, we're much newer than ours, they don't have the maintenance costs, we could be there.
True.
I guess my parents were already behind, they were already behind, because we had a breeze in fourteen years previously, so we're already, already behind.
You know, and, and I, I get that, I really do, but don't, um, like, because.
Yeah. My fear is that we, well, that often we're gonna get sticker, sticker shots next year. I think, I think we have to, I think just being responsible, it's, it's not fair, it's not right, Saginaw, it's shut. Saginaw's a problem, but we don't, we don't get our own water. I'm okay being a bad guy, I'm a bad guy, we're good at school. This is basically giving twelve thousand gallons per quarter.
Where do they get their water?
Pardon?
Merrill, where do they get their water, bro?
They haven't changed theirs since, what, twenty twenty?
They have, they have their own wells.
Yeah.
So what about like Swan Creek Township? I don't see it on here.
So can we actually compare the ones with the wells to ours?
Not really, but these are surrounding, we tried to call other places and get as many as we can.
Because I know Chesnean has a well too. Chesnean's the highest one on here, holy cow.
I'm gonna say flat quarterly rate.
Does it go according to how many residents too?
No. It's on water through the meter.
Okay.
Because they're gonna build the same way we are. Water through usage.
So, Kochville Township doesn't use as much water as we do?
That's why everybody says, let's bring a, like, water park to, back to St. Charles, well, that's a million gallons that we have to eat the cost on, do the math on that one. For a summer, just ninety days, let's just say, ends up being like a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Unless you can reuse the water post-COVID without cleaning it somehow.
Hmm, how would you do it?
Why is there such a difference in the rate?
Pardon?
There's such a difference in the rate, you'd be pretty close to the same.
Well, you've got to understand, with, with us not reasoning for fourteen years, we fell way behind, whereas other people probably did it incrementally, all years.
Look at that, three forty-one and five sixty, seven oh eight, seven seventy, it's like.
Some areas are larger than others too.
Carleton's nine eighty-five, Burke Run, nine seventy-eight. Per one thousand over fifteen thousand. You think it'd be a little closer to the same all the way across the board?
Also depends on what kind of projects we have going, maybe they don't have any, maybe they have a ton, I know Kochville's been.
Depends on much debt they have, they're paying on.
Right. Our, uh, our water fund was floundering when I got here.
I don't know if they have, Carleton used to have like two mills under taxes for water improvements, which was separate from the water bill too. Some places can do it, I don't know if they still do, but they used to.
Their stuff's gotta be way newer than ours.
Carleton's not, it's.
Are we able to get the rates for like Saginaw Township, Thomas, Swan Creek Townships?
Yeah, we can certainly try.
I mean, yeah, that's, that's a pretty try, that'd be great.
Yeah, no problem.
Both areas are larger than we are though, doesn't that make, that makes a difference, right?
Well, I, yes.
You have to know.
I'm just saying, like, like Swan Creek Township, our friend just got her water bill, it's eighty-nine dollars. Yes, they don't have sewer, but just water alone, eighty-nine dollars, that's household four. So.
Well, water alone here would be, what, ninety, ninety-nine dollars? That's comparable.
Well, you're, you're saying right here.
That's no sewer, if you just take the two thousand four sixty-eight fifty-one ready to serve and the water minimum.
No, you, but yeah, your bolded number is one forty-five nineteen for sewer, for water. Right? That's what you're saying is your minimum?
The minimum's one fifty-eight oh nine, is that what you're looking at? Oh, you're, you're at here, okay, I'm looking here. So this is ours, like, obviously this is twelve thousand gallons, this, I don't know what she used gallon wise.
Yeah, well, I'm just household four, so.
So they've probably ten thousand gallons easy. So twelve thousand, yeah, so. About twelve thousand, maybe one forty-five, almost doubled. Again, nothing for fourteen years though. And now we've got five point two million on the hook. The whole point of paying, how we pay for it was water rates, sewer rates.
And we're sticking up a bunch of old lines.
Pardon?
We're still gonna end up having a bunch of old lines.
Yeah. We're getting rid of them slowly but surely.
Just saying like down my road.
I can't, I'd probably.
That would be part of phase two when it comes.
Yeah.
Oh, really?
So we talked about finishing off.
They weren't gonna do, they're gonna stop right there at the.
Well, for phase one.
Yeah, so we're talking about finishing off this quarter for phase two. And then going right up your area and hopefully starting sooner rather than later.
Yeah, I thought they were just gonna stop right there at Chesne Road and that was it.
For now, for phase one. And phase two was gonna happen in twenty twenty-eight, twenty twenty, twenty thirty plus. We're looking at keeping going.
Right, I think that was pretty much replacing all the cast iron water mains in the whole village phase two, and the, and the new river crossing, I think wasn't that hard?
Yeah, the river crossing's huge. That's gonna be expensive, we're trying to get him that on board with that one.
Yeah, if you get through phase two, that's pretty much gonna take care of all the old cast iron mains. And likely galvanizing line service lines too.
That's why we're going after that six hundred thousand dollar grant to identify and replace what we can, if we can't get the funds to go in phase two.
Well, I know we've had a few. Water main breaks right down there, so that's one, I, you know it's old, so.
Yeah, we got, I mean, the map they put together, check all our water breaks and he had dots on a map and you can see the areas that were more problematic, which.
So I chose to do what we did was based on their maps and the sixteen and nineteen studies saw a grand mess.
Is there anything on this side that needs to be done?
Yes, there's, there's Maple Street, Pangian Street here has some. Uh, you got cast iron lines, not here as much, but yes, there is cast iron service.
Is that gonna be part of phase two?
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
I, I think phase two pretty much would replace all cast iron, considering the village.
Okay. So, none, none of this goes for future infrastructure at all, right?
With all those.
Pays, pays for the bonds.
Yeah.
Got, oh, gotcha, okay, okay. Heart, you're like in the middle of it, you're the one that sees these numbers and I, I mean.
That's, I'm, that's what I'm saying, we, you, it's your decision, obviously, but. I'm letting you know financially, we can get away with not raising right now for all the twenty twenty-four. But twenty twenty-five will have to get up to that one seventy thirty-four. And I think thirteen dollars ninety-nine cents for five years is a pretty good deal.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Especially since the city Saginaw is doing well more than that.
What, what percent does that equal up to that raise?
Uh, seven point eight percent.
Thirteen dollars?
You know, six point nine, eight point six, eight point two, five point five it goes down to in twenty twenty-nine. But we're gonna have to bond out in twenty twenty-eight if we're gonna do any major projects like this, the revolving fund. We have to bond for another three point five million.
And keep in mind the water we're purchasing goes up every year too.
I don't think the decision's gonna be any easier if we were to put it off till next year. I think we need to be fiscally responsible and pay our bills. That is how I feel.
My opinion is, is that, do I want more, an- you know, another raise in our rates? Absolutely not, but. We ca- I don't think we can. I don't, I don't think we can hold out and, and, you know, we're just, all we're doing is putting it off for another year and that's.
Some people, they really thought they were elected a lot doing that. Keeping the can down the road.
That's what they do, you know, we're looking like the bad guys now. We're looking like the bad guys for something that was done.
Well.
Years ago that we had no control over.
You gotta be, you gotta be okay, cause you gotta know when you're, how you're doing the right thing, so it's okay to be the bad guy.
If you did it gradual, instead of throwing it right in their lap, I think it would be better, so you can look ahead and just kinda.
Well, that's what they ask.
Four dollars and nine cent increase. I mean, that's four dollars.
Like, dollars, you know the water rate's gonna keep going up anyway, so.
Yeah, it, it's, it's gonna break, there is gonna be a breaking point, I don't think we're there yet, but we're, we're close. But what do you do? You know, tell the city Saginaw, we don't want their water anymore?
It's okay, fine, it shuts you off. You guys can all get your wells dug and.
Everybody did your own well.
Yeah.
My daughter who lives in Ohio takes water home with her when she comes up to visit. Cause she said even down there, their water is bad.
We have the same water probably.
That's the thing, we have.
Goods across state line. Poor and good across state line.
Water tanks.
Boiling water.
Can I make a motion under protest? I make a motion that we accept resolution number twenty-four one to amend the water rates.
Support.
Jamie Kendall?
No.
Darcy McSwain?
Yes.
Paul Jenderski?
Yeah.
Edgar Tidoff?
Yes.
Michael Nesbit?
Yes.
Kathy Harris?
Yes.
Lois Tyler's absent.
And that, the sewer rates are also in your resolution.
You, you want each one separate?
I'll make a motion to amend the sewer rates as well. Resolution twenty-four one, er, sorry, twenty-four two.
The four dollars and nine cent increase.
Four dollars and nine cent increase.
Support.
Jamie Kendall?
No.
Darcy McSwain?
Yeah.
Paul Jenderski?
Yeah.
Edgar Tidoff?
Yes.
Michael Nesbit?
Yes.
Kathy Harris?
Yes.
Lois Tyler's absent.
Under process.
What do you do, damage to the engine, damage to the.
Right.
Yep.
Uh, the generator at the barn is down and, um, Phil Hubble checks on them quarterly, he's in Florida for the next few months. For a couple of weeks, I guess. Um, the other two are looking fine. Um, he suggested a new one, uh. He's had zero problems with Kohlers versus the Generac. Uh, so he suggested he got a pretty good deal on this, uh, Kohler with automatic transfer switch to back up the barn. I thought it was gonna be more than this.
Doesn't seem like a lot, does it?
Pardon?
It doesn't seem like a lot.
No, I feel like that's like for a house.
Well, it doesn't run the whole building.
Right.
It just runs the doors and, and which is fine.
It's a pretty good deal then.
Go look even at a Generac for your own, how much.
Yeah, it's like eleven to thirteen easy.
Something like this, okay.
The current one's twenty-five years old.
What makes the Kohler better than the Generac?
He said on all his, um, he just said on his rounds, he's had zero problems with the Kohlers, and I've always heard good things about Generac.
I think there's good things about Generac too, so.
I think it's still a Generac.
I mean, I've got Kohler engines that I've never had problems with, but.
I, I think it's still a Generac generator, but the motor would be a Kohler. The one that's out there is a Generac generator with a Generac motor in it.
Oh, sure.
I think that's where.
Generac makes their, their own motors?
Tell me, I didn't know they did, but they do make their own. On some, you know about it.
They made a couple of Generac's.
I have no idea. I didn't know they made their own.
So there's three generators out there?
No, no, one.
One off the, for the barn?
We have three, back, we have one on here, one on the east main.
Why are we, we going to replace it instead of fix it? But he's, cause uh.
He's trying to fix it and he's.
There's some board that he can't get parts for.
I, if you can read his servants performed, like, it's. Check, check oil, battery.
Yeah, there's.
Gen good.
How old is that generator?
Twenty-five years.
Twenty-five years old in the building.
Yeah, you got your money worth, yeah.
Reset controller tested and couldn't make it happen.
He can't get parts for, but we've been nursing it along anyway.
Well, Mr. Hubble's pretty.
He hasn't raised his.
He knows his business, I, I.
Yeah, he's a good guy.
Known him a long time, so if he says.
Yeah.
And, and we better have you within service, I mean, we'll, uh, so.
If he gets you talking though, just be careful, you got twenty minutes, make sure you hear twenty.
But he does a good job.
I had to go to the bathroom, I'm like, this isn't happening.
Okay, I, I just have a question. Um, cause I looked up this, this type of generator.
Mm-hmm.
And the price that I found was, was five thousand one hundred and ninety-five dollars? So, what would be, what would be six thousand one hundred and ninety-four more?
Does it include an installation on it?
See, that's what I was wondering.
Sure, the one you looked up, there was an installation.
Okay, all right, but it cost that much to install?
One year operation maintenance, five year, two thousand hour warranty, offloading that job site, complete removal of old generator and ATS and installation.
So that's all?
Yep.
Okay. I know nothing about generators, so.
I.
Those who do.
I think we should get two more quotes.
Okay.
That's, no, that's not a bad idea. Yeah, I don't think this will, well, I, I mean, I think it's reasonable, but I'm just, Jamie's kinda right though, I mean, why just go with one guy and why not shop around?
We just don't want to spend money, why don't we just? We just raised the water rates, we don't.
He just, no, that's, no, he just presented the quote as an option, I, he wasn't pushing it.
Nope, he came in and he said he couldn't get it going and it won't start, it won't stay going.
Because in the, in the, under a set here that says, the smant mounting pad, is there one currently, oh yeah, I'm there?
It, it is, but we've had wood chuck problems where it's kind of, it probably should be fixed. But yeah, we can get, you know, get two more quotes, that's easy enough to do.
Yeah, no problem.
But keep in mind.
That's just my. That's a good idea.
It's a good idea.
Well, I, the only thing that might affect is that, is him servicing it, you know, I don't know.
Or maybe he can come back.
I don't know.
Get a couple quotes and maybe go counter.
Maybe go counter. You know?
It's pretty easy to work.
I think it's actually pretty reasonable, yeah. Not a bad idea to shop around.
I like it.
Are we gonna table this then, or?
Yeah.
Jamie, I'll make a motion to table.
I'll make a motion to table the generator bids for.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Bids for blight removal on six thirty-two Front Street.
If you wanna speak to this, Scott, or not. We have three quotes, so obviously there's quite a bit of difference in pricing. But it is advantageous for the village to take, obviously, the cheaper in here is the advantage of getting a quote.
Are they all just doing the same job?
Yes.
You're sure they're all doing the same thing?
That's what they say.
Clean up.
It means he doesn't wanna do it.
Yeah, yeah, I think you're high ones, I don't wanna do it.
Yeah, he needs a new truck.
So should it come to it, which I'm not sure on the date that we would know, yes, how many days does, does he have? I believe the twenty-first is. Of this month, correct? If it's not cleaned, we can at his expense bring in one of these people to get it cleaned up.
How long a time for it, like, I think it's doing a week, ten days? Couldn't have to drag it on over a year or something.
I'm sure when you award the bid, you could tell me when it's done with those things.
Kind of same, which doesn't say that on here, it's long.
Whatever will be done, um, and what's the advantage of us going with the lowest bid? Well, we're required to show some fiscal responsibility to that homeowner, with that homeowner's money.
Okay.
I was always trying to pick the highest and lowest time off, pick the one that I want.
Something too high. So it looks like we're not trying to burden him while cleaning it up, uh, I believe he did get a second, uh, ticket today for burning.
Really?
Um, hundred and forty-five dollars on this one, first one was ninety bucks, so. The price is adding up, the charge is adding up, the judge, he knows what's going on, so.
Those kids don't even care.
And, and I've told people that for years, you, the money does not matter, you can put it on his taxes, he has no plans of paying. He's going to lose the house and we are going to inevitably razz the house. Which I don't think will make anybody upset.
No.
No, no, especially the neighbors.
So, uh, this is just preparing, I, I don't see it getting cleaned up in the next fifteen days or whatever he has, ten days. Uh, and so we're gonna be prepared to go in and start doing our job for the rest, the other residents, for the neighbors, for the community. Uh, it's a eyesore, it's a, it's, it's health and safety hazard, it's disgusting. It's time, and we, we've.
Little past time.
Yeah, it's, it's past time, truly, we've built and built and we've worked on our ordinances to get to the point where we could have a little teeth in the, in the game. Instead of just paper. So, we are planning to clean it up.
Cool.
We need your approval.
That, that little bidder did demo a house on hatchet and I think he's more than capable of doing a nice job.
Get her done.
I'm all for it.
I mean, Scott, you've seen the work he did.
Yeah, it looks great.
I don't really know.
My question is, is when that happens, are you gonna want one of us representing him in case he gets a problem? Cause you know he's trying to. Yes.
I was gonna ask that.
Is that gonna add to the Nolan?
Yes.
To, well, to the, his bill.
Yes. The, our hourly rate, you mean? Yeah, cause we're, I mean, I, it, it's gonna probably be all day, so I'm gonna have to schedule somebody to be there all day.
Couple days.
Yeah, well, when, when, whenever you figure out the bill, just let, figure out how many days it's gonna be and when you're gonna do it, so I can plan ahead to get somebody there.
Yep, okay. Honestly, I think you have a problem.
Oh, I'm sure we will.
Absolutely. Now, Scott, will you, will you have to have a court order to go on his property then?
I have it already.
You do, okay.
He's got until the deadline, after that, we have the right of entry to clean it by any means and bill him for the cleaning. In fact, there were two orders issued, one was for the burning, which he's already violated. And he's been written a second citation for that, I'm sure the judge is gonna have a heyday with him when he goes back.
So now, if, if he refuses to allow anyone to come on the property, may he be arrested?
More than likely, which would be a court order.
I'll make a motion to accept Schultz's excavating for the price of twenty-five hundred dollars.
All supports.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It goes to Schultz.
Thank you.
Thank you so far. Thank you, Scott, you have the good work.
Department reports, DPW.
On the water, we bumped three point nine million gallons last month and year, year to date, it was fifty-one point seven million gallons. Sewer, we bumped six point seven million gallons last month and seventy-four point nine for the year. Streets, just routine patching, parks, we were mulching leaves as the weather permitted, and we were able to mulch. On the miscellaneous end, we helped with old passion, Christmas, putting up decorations, the parade, and then we've been working on. Cleaning out the old pool house, we're gonna try to make that usable for some stories, we tore some walls out and trying to open it up. I think probably less than a thousand bucks, we can close it in to make it useful and secure, so.
What do we do with that mulch?
We just mulch in place.
Well, I mean, I feel they're like thirteen, or they mulch it, they make it into some kind of compost, I.
Yeah, it just goes to compost.
Real good stuff, I mean, they sell that stuff, so.
Uh, you can, but there's garbage in it and stuff, it's.
Yeah, that's something, they're pretty rich stuff.
Oh, it's good dirt, but.
You know what I'm talking about, right there by the fallen tree?
Oh, yeah, for the city, they'd actually.
A lot of leaves.
They'd run theirs through a, like a top grinder and grind it up. Ours is good stuff, but it's not clean as ours, we have no way to, we just turn it with a loader.
If you recycle it, it'd be good, but yeah.
Some people treat it like their personal garbage dump sometimes, so. Well, it's good stuff, if you wanna take a shovel and pick through it, you can. Well, it's good stuff, if you wanna take a shovel and pick through it, you can get some good stuff out of it. But it does grow. And then, and so you listen to, are we getting ready for snow again or nothing? In the next few days, so.
I'm thinking nothing.
We see estimates of two inches to eighteen inches, so.
Too stoned, because I thought I was gonna use them for a boat anchor.
You might get to use them here in a couple of days.
Thinking.
But we're ready if it comes, so it is what it is.
Certainly shouldn't be low on salt.
No, we got plenty.
Oh, you're saying so much money, no, it's a contract, we already bought it. But we're saving in gas in overtime.
Yeah, we've basically been no overtime.
Sorry, Tyler.
It goes in cycles, some years are double and other years are like this.
Somebody told me today, Alpina's supposed to get like thirty-nine inches. Really? That's.
Yeah, I mean, if it snows that heavy, we can pay overtime, so.
Inches, I mean inches?
So we've been saving.
Alpina. Thanks, Dan.
Chief Oliver, what you got for us? Oh.
Oh, big cup, by the way.
What's that? Oh, thanks, yeah. Just gotta recognize the Wolverines first, yeah.
Are you blowing your hair out?
No. I cut it, took it Monday. I don't, I don't shave it bald, though. Um, not much in terms of calls this month, it's kind of a slower month. December happens every year, cause people are on vacations and they're gone. Not a whole lot going on, uh, we had some weekends vacant, or some Saturdays vacant, that was due to people taking their holidays with families and stuff like that, so I combinated that. Curtis graduated the academy, he's in his FTO program, phase one. Will end in two weeks, I think it is, is when he's done with the phase one. He's got four phases to go through, so he's working, getting there. Um, some, some people you get that pick stuff up right away and take off, and some don't, sometimes you gotta lead a little bit more, but he'll get there, he's working out. Um, next month, starting next month, I will be utilizing, um, Michelle a little bit more for the weekends to cover the off weekends now until Curtis gets done. So she will have like one random day off during the week from the school as SRO, and then she'll work the Saturday night. And, or Friday night and Saturday night shift, so she'll rotate onto that and cover that, I talked to her about it, she's fine, cause it's just gonna be until Curtis gets done, so. That way we have Friday, Saturday nights covered all month long. Had it all set up, and then Ethan has to take the weekend off for, for evening, so had to move some stuff around for this coming up weekend, but we got it, we got it made. See if I can stay up to one o'clock in the morning on Friday. See how that goes. Nothing, no word from Chuck in terms of a, an actual date, still looking at just a possible April, April, um, delivery date. Looked up a lot of prices for the equipment, got some quotes, got them to heart, we're looking at that stuff, seeing what we can do. I'm calling around, asking other chiefs for grants, what they use for grants, where they could possibly get some extra money, so we're not paying for it out, out of pocket. Got a couple leads. Um, the, uh, Director of Antipatrol would call me personally and said that she had got a place down in Detroit to fund all of her stuff. So she was gonna contact them to see if they'd be able to help us out, just wait for her to call back on that. Think that, she said they gave her like thirty-five thousand dollars between three different checks. So, see what happens, I mean, we'll see, I'll see what's out there. Um, that's just the start of it too, so we'll see, and there's home line security stuff. Um, I sent you something on the insurance plan, I guess some insurance plans will actually pay for your body cameras or cameras for the car, because it brings the liability down. So it's just something, something avenues to help on every little bit we can try and find, so.
How much are them cameras a piece?
Which ones? The in-car cameras are twenty-one hundred dollars. The body cameras, I think, were, was it like seven hundred for one or six, seven hundred for one? I think it was. Yeah, they went up, when I originally bought them in Millington, it was like four hundred dollars for one, and they went up a couple hundred dollars since, for the advancements and stuff.
If we were to get them here, how many would we actually need, like two?
We have two now, we could use a third one. Um, just for regular use, because you got them on all day long, you come back in, you set it down, it doesn't charge for the next person, then they don't have one. So it's just a matter of having enough for the rotations and everything, that way I have one and Michelle has one while she's in the school. But right now, when we both get off at three, Curtis and Ethan come in, and the two that we've used were, their, the batteries were definitely padded on all day.
Can't you just swap the batteries though?
No, it's just, you're charged, put in a dock, yeah. It's an internal battery like your cell phone.
Well, you know what I'm saying, though, it'd be different if you.
It's an internal battery just like your cell phone is.
Even like with, with a, with a cell phone, they got like the extra little chargers, they don't have something.
No, it's just something else you'd have to carry on your person, yeah, yeah. A battery, a battery, um, not a battery box, but.
Yeah.
Power pack.
Power pack.
That's what they're called, yeah, that would be something you'd have to plug it in and carry it on, around with you as well.
Can't plug them in in the car or something? No?
No, that would have to run through the computer and Saginaw doesn't like us to touch their computers, we don't own the computers. So, but that's the one thing, it'd be one more, just to make it easier on the rotation stuff that we have, especially when we have, when we get four shifts at a time now, pretty soon once our Curtis gets done, just we have, so everybody has one. The old ones that we have still, I wouldn't say they still work, but they're there, but they're not as trustworthy, cause Ethan had a case the other day when, he had it on when the, the fleeing elude that he had on, and he pushed, it didn't record. So that's, that was the main reason why we initially got the two new ones we got, it's cause they were malfunctioning. But now we have a need for one more, and the, the old ones that he is using at, at times malfunction, so it's just not a liability thing, portion of it, basically, is what it comes down to.
Can you do a trade-in kind of thing, or no?
Those aren't same company. Different company. The one I, we went to, makes them right out of ground ram, is I want somebody local, keep the money in the state. And it's the same, in-car cameras are the same company, so. And then we also talked about our tasers are five years old. Those are getting, you know, where you call up to, to get a battery for it, and he says, oh, you might wanna think about upgrading those pretty soon, cause they're gonna stop making parts for them. Well, those, it's another added bill, you know?
You say five years old?
Yeah, five years old on the tasers we have, we have three of them.
Is that the average age?
What's that?
Is that the average age?
They say every three years.
Really?
Yeah, so we're two years past due, but we haven't had any issues with them, so I didn't see a point for it. But when I had to buy a new battery, it was one of them dead.
Often do you ever use, I mean, do you really use that often?
Well, I mean, it, I mean, it's one of those things that you, you, you'd rather have it, not need it, need it, not have it, you know? So, cause the only other option next to that is your pistol, for the most part. But that's one of the things, that's not, that's one of the things I talked to Hart, if we find a grant, we'll get them that way, if not, we'll hold off on them for now.
How much are the things?
The new ones? Oh, jeez, I have to look, but they're, they're over three thousand dollars, I think, a piece.
You'd think that'd start coming down in price after they've been on.
It happened to a good old fashioned nightstick.
We got those, but it's frowned upon to use those nowadays.
Yeah, you can't use those anymore.
Not when you have the, not, not when you have the other thing that's more safe.
Probably what's wrong with society today.
Yeah. That's all I got.
What about the beanbag then?
Well, we got the beanbag guns still, yeah, we'll keep those. Uh, we are looking into a possibility of, of trading in our shotguns that we carry, cause nobody carries a shotgun anymore, they're just collecting dust. Um, so we've been talking with, um, Thurston's to see if they'll take them in and just give us store credit, and we can just purchase our ammo for maybe a year or two on that, and add to put in our budget, so. Depends on how much they give it to us, we got two shotguns and a bunch of ammo, but we don't even qualify with them anymore, cause we just don't use them. And we have the ARs that we'll keep, and we'll have, we'll keep the beanbag guns, and then. You know, if something happens, I'm not gonna reach in and grab the shotgun, I'm gonna grab the AR, I mean, that's just the way it is, there's no point keeping them. And then with the new vehicle, you'd have to buy a second holster or, um, carrier for it, which is ano- another expense that we don't need. So I didn't even put that on my quote for that, cause I didn't plan on putting a shotgun in the truck. Just no need for it, we don't use it, it's just sitting there, so. Let's know they weren't looking into it, but.
I was saying, I was looking at township's trucks the other day, those are nice.
Yeah, Thurston's got one. Uh, not, is it Thomas?
Thomas has one too.
Thomas does a soap one, yeah, Thomas does, and then Saginaw's got one too. I don't know if it's a road truck over there, or if it's a, just a supervisor vehicle, maybe?
Could be, could be.
I know they all had, they all got the, the Eco, um, Explorers like we had for the township, and every time I go there, there's three or four in there without them, so.
I see something, I don't know if this is even feasible, my travels. They actually had billboards, what do you wanna call it, on the side, or, on the side of the police car, they were advertising, advertising was on the police cars, it's, yeah, swear to God, they did. And it was like, whatever, Tony's or Lowe's or whatever on the side, giving money to the police department to advertise, so. I'm not saying that's, that's, it's a stretch, but I'm just, yeah.
We'll see if Cam's gonna give us a sticker.
Or Thurston's.
I was gonna say.
I'm kinda shocked to see it, but yeah, they, I, I didn't see it once, I seen it a few times.
I, I've seen those before too.
Well, wow, but you know what, if it brings money, brings money, we're wheeling it up to mail.
Get it cops and bullets.
Cops ain't going.
It'd be interesting.
You'll just declare.
There's a big fat donut on the side of the car.
Mr. Building Inspector.
Then you get out.
So funny.
Oh.
Kind of gross how you taste your hair.
Not yet.
Scott?
Alright, everybody, um, for December, we had a whole two permits to, that's all the Kian, one electrical, one mechanical. For twenty twenty-three, we had a total of fifty-five for the year. Um, I dealt with nine complaints last month, two of those are resolved, there were actually no cause for action. Nothing there to write. The seven that are underway, three of those are actually currently referred to court, one of them is going back. It's the one I mentioned earlier on Flint Street with the additional, uh, citation there.
So that's probably going away then, finally, right?
Pardon me?
Issue two, issue seven. Probably going away.
It'll be in the next month.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, I am waiting for print, uh, plan updates for the three oh five Emperor newer drive, I haven't received those yet. Um, and I'm waiting for print plan updates for eleven oh one North Saginaw, the old Barney's. Got a few issues we're trying to work out there. So, I do have permits here, I just can't issue them yet till we get these things worked out, so. Soon as that happens, I hope to get those done, I'll be back in the office probably Friday. I came back early today to get some extra time in on those, so I can get those things done, so. That's all I have, any questions?
Um, Scott, we ran into Scott Brainerd the other night, and he said that he had emailed you and he hadn't gotten a response from you.
I've responded to every email I've gotten.
Okay, just, I told him I'd mentioned that to you.
Alright. I'm still waiting for the, the plan updates, I have, uh, received those.
Okay, I'll let him know.
Yep.
Question? Four twenty-four, um, East North Street?
Yes, sir.
Uh, there was something mentioned at the last meeting about, uh, a bid being placed, uh, on, uh, the tax lien there?
Um, I'll give you a little update on that.
Yeah, only say what you can say, it's still at the state, I believe?
Yes.
Okay. Progress has been made, uh, several people have bid with the county, um, for the property, but as of right now, uh, it's looking like we are gonna be at the top of the list to have it demolished using a, a, a grant, so. Um, hoping in the next two months.
Should be.
Uh, it should be razzed, and then it'll be, go to the bid process for ownership.
So, the, the, the private individual that put a bid on it is not being considered?
There's, there's several that rushed to the courthouse to put a bid on it, it's not just one.
So why, why can't they clean it up themselves if they want it that bad?
That's a good question, but there's a grant, there's a grant available, we pursue the grant.
You want it, take it.
It'll be faster.
I mean, the foundation's probably still good, is that what they planned on doing?
I don't know.
I mean, if we do it, it's gonna be total level, right?
It'll, it'll be through the county.
Oh, I'm just saying.
Yeah, yep.
I think it would make more sense if they were gonna.
Let them people do it?
Maybe you just take the house off and let the foundation, whatever.
That's between the county and those individuals, cause I got a couple calls, and like, hey, is that still, and I said, whoa, whoa, whoa. You asked me about it, and we had conflicting people, and I was, that's between them and the county, I'm just gonna stay out of this. Yeah, people want it. We're just trying to get it taken, cleaned up as fast as possible with funds that aren't ours.
What was the timetable then, you said two months?
That's a guess.
Maybe between the state and the county. The county has to make, has a timetable to work with, and then they have to take to the state of Michigan for approval for the grant funds. It could take county two months and the state another two, there's no way to speed up their outside processes.
I will, I will say this, that the county has approved it on, from our side.
Right.
So spring would be a likely completion date? Sometime in the spring?
I, I can't really speak further than that.
We're hoping sooner, but likely yes. I'm hoping sooner.
Me too.
But I don't know when they took it to the state, if they're taking it, still haven't taken it.
It looks like it's deteriorated.
Yeah, we found out last week it was approved, so we're hoping they'll go right to the state, and they'd, knock it out for us.
It's no cost to the.
No cost to the village.
Thank you, Scott.
I would, uh, just like to add that the board of determination met last night on the Benton Street drain, they did approve and find a need for clearing out the drain on hatchet. Uh, no scope, so no guesstimate of, um, on costs or what it's gonna be. Because it's gonna be chapter three or four rather than chapter twenty, it's chapter twenty, the village would have paid eighty-eight point eight-eight percent of the project, which is, my guess is gonna be forty-four thousand dollars.
How much of that can we do ourselves, though?
Well, I mean, that was if, the drain commission is going to do it. Even if they did it their way, that was the old way, chapter twenty, MDOT would pay two percent, they would pay seven point five, or whatever it is. But anyway, because it's three or four, we'll end up paying, my guess is around seventy-five hundred dollars. And then the property owners will have to pay a certain amount, I was trying to rack numbers and guesstimate in my head last night in bed.
These property owners, I haven't really heard anything from them, I mean, they, they.
So, I, I.
If it come out of your pocket, wouldn't you be down here going, hey, what's going on?
So it was, it wasn't a packed house, but everybody that was affected was here last night, and it's kinda interesting, there's a gentleman that was here like, so it was at six, he was here like five thirty sitting, and I'm like, I guarantee he's the one that petitioned. So I got to talking with him, he's an engineer, and he's tried to clean it up himself, and I'm like, for sure it's him, for sure it's him. And somebody's like, have we figured out who the guy is that petitioned yet? And I'm like, nope. And, but, uh, I think four people spoke in favor of it, and a couple negative, but they made me speak out in favor of it.
It's all about the money, is what I'm trying to say, when you're putting in, like we just talked about, thirteen dollars going up in a water rate, they're gonna complain about that, but how much is it actually gonna cost these people, I mean?
Right, that's what I'm, I was trying to.
People are screaming.
Trying to crunch it, like, so that they're gonna go twenty years, they're probably gonna pay a hundred and fifty bucks a year, maybe, two, two hundred bucks a year.
People, I'm weird, they're, that doesn't sound like a lot, but.
Yeah.
You said when you're on a fixed budget.
Right, and people have ten days to, uh, to appeal at the courthouse, circuit court, but. It was, uh, it was approved. So that work will be done, hopefully, he says they have eighteen month window.
Starting when, no?
Clock is started.
They only have ten days to appeal.
That's all I have. Might be some public comment.
I would just like to say thank you, Scott, the boys are appreciated, and. All your hard work this year, and you are appreciated.
Thank you.
Public comment?
Mark Westlock, twelve sixty North Main Street. Um, we brought up a, a Jake breaking issue, just want a status of, uh, what we're doing about that.
You get people Jake breaking down North Main?
Uh, we're so close to M fifty-two. Uh, Rick Fowler, in particular, he gets, uh, awa- awakened at, um, four thirty in the morning from somebody coming into the pallet factory. Um, it's still happening, I live on Beaver Creek, so if they're Jake breaking and they're coming over the bridge on Beaver Creek, it's like a megaphone down in the river.
I get it, but how you gonna stop that? Can you give a ticket, how do you prove it?
Well, we've talked about that. Well, we've talked about that.
You put up a sign when they jake break, but I mean, how do you prove it?
Well, other villages.
At four o'clock in the morning, you're gonna be down there waiting for them?
Okay, let me, let me answer your question. We had basically looked at other villages. Uh, Duran is one. Uh, and what we're asking for as a possible remedy is signs on M fifty-two saying either no jake breaking or, you know, a, a violation of the sound ordinance that we don't have yet.
Well, that's kinda out of the, the village limits too, so.
No, it isn't.
No, it's not.
Well, the village limits.
No, the issue follows is, uh, fifty-two and, and it's a state highway and they're very picky about the signs you get to put on their highway. You have to go through them.
I'm just gonna say.
If you want the signs there, you have to go through them and they put them up. It's not something that we can put up that, that.
Well, we can petition to do it though, right?
You can call and ask them to and they'll come and do a survey.
What I'm just saying, I mean, I drive truck. I get it. Trust me. I go through all these town, they put up signs. The guys still do it anyways. I mean, how do you, how do you give my ticket? How do you prove that they did it?
Well, you know.
I'm on your side. I'm saying, hey.
Yeah, we've talked about, you know.
How do you prove it?
Well, there is a, a decibel reading that, uh, could be, uh, used to enforce a sound ordinance. Uh, we don't really want that. We just got a problem. Rick Fowler is, got the problem at four o'clock in the morning with the jake breakers coming in. And, uh, basically, you know, step one would be, uh, if, uh, somehow we could, uh, write, uh, warning citations. I mean, we don't have to, you know, go to court, just write a couple warning citations. That will get through the community. If that doesn't work, then you write, you know, uh, uh, an official violation of the sound ordinance. But again, my understanding is that we don't have a solid sound ordinance yet.
Do they, is there a jake, do they do the jake breaking when they're turning into the pallet shop?
You got dual exhaust on you for the jake breaking. It, it's.
They're, they're trying to save on their brake pads.
But is it going into the pallet shop? Is that what you're mainly talking about or?
You know, it's, I, I've heard it, I've heard it with trucks coming from south to north through the village. So those are guys that are transit through the village. It seems to have been, gotten better, but you know, what we're trying to do is, you know, to address the issue. Um, a sign would just put the truck drivers on notice, hey, don't jake break. You know, and again, if we write citations, fine, if we don't, but we're trying to get something to at least make the truckers aware that, you know, the sound is an issue.
Well, it's not just, I mean, the fire department has jake breaks on the fire trucks.
But it doesn't do it.
But like, but you don't have to use it.
I get what you're saying, but I know what he's talking about. They do exhaust and they hit that thing with a load on there, that thing just screaming.
I got my CDL, I know where it is, but I'm just.
It sounds like for a truck driver, it's an optional prac- practice to slow your truck down is jake breaking.
For sure, definitely saves on brakes.
Yeah, and, and again, you know, as a resident of the village, I'm surprised that there hasn't been signs put up or that we don't have an ordinance to, um, enforce. Uh, this village has been, what, in existence for a hundred and fifty years? It's not like the problem just came today or it came yesterday. You know, it's been here for a long, long time and we're just trying to, uh, raise the issue. And I've worked with Hart, you know, we talked about different things, I've given a writ, uh, written memo. All I want is a response. What are we gonna do? If it's nothing, then I go back to my neighborhood and say, hey, tough shit.
No, I think, think putting up a sign is just the first, first step with them.
Yes.
But then if you give that guy a ticket, he's gonna take it to court and he's gonna go prove it.
Well, exactly.
I, 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 I'd have talked with Mark. Um, here is the response I got from M dot. We get asked about this all the time and our response is that no jake break or jake breaks prohibited signs are prohibited from M dot roads, M fifty-two being M dot road. You can't put that sign up. Now, engine jake brakes are not illegal as they're designed to save wear and tear on the braking themselves. The noise typically comes from a muffler system that is removed from the engine brake system causing the noise. We can permit a sign that states the local noise ordinance will be enforced, so working with the planning commission, hopefully beginning next week, we're gonna look at the code enforcement and that will be something that we will address. It might take the whole year before it's finalized, just like the zoning side of it. Uh, but at the same time, okay, so they can permit the sign, it's M dot's road, but we can work on the sound ordinance and there are decimals. In my experience, uh, when I ran the county, not a judge in the county would take a case of a decibel or noise ordinance. You cannot prove it and it's just like you're saying, prove it.
Well, I think we're, we're.
But we can take the steps and do the right thing because, uh, uh, let's try to address it.
If you put a sign up, not saying it's gonna be enforced, but it'll make the trucker think twice before he clicks that.
And, and that's, and that's.
Exactly.
But again, it's M dot's road, M dot's sign.
We get it.
Here's the challenge, here's the challenge. I'll take over the, the chestling sign. You'll do better chestling. It's supposed to be there with a camera on that billboard.
Know what?
A little camera in the sign.
Yeah. Here, here's the challenge I have to the, the M dot, uh, issue is that basically if I'm not wrong, I, I believe that, uh, you know, the village of St. Charles is a sovereign village. And so within the village, how can M dot tell us we can't put a sign up, whatever it is, in the village? And I can point out about a half a dozen signs on M fifty-two within the village that, you know, were put up. Uh, there's, you know, there's quite a few signs I'm sure that M dot did not approve. So there's gotta be something about the sovereign sovereignty-ness of.
They've all been M dot approved. They have to be on M fifty-two.
How, how about the tree sign? There's something that, you know.
Yeah, they had, the Tree City USA, Don Huntley picked out that spot.
We had to get the approval of put the Christmas trees out.
Yeah, we got yelled at for the Christmas trees.
Well, tell, tell you the truth, back in the day of Hal Mead, uh, if you know there is a, a bicycle, you know, uh, you know, a bicycling sign, uh, on M fifty-two, you know, basically share the road signs. It, it was me that basically initiated through the recommendation of the village and Hal Mead and I went through that process and we got those signs put up. And there's two of them. So it's not like it can't be done and I volunteered with heart to, to do the legwork if it's necessary. Uh, just, you know, point me in the right direction. Uh, when I did it for the share the road signs on M fifty-two, the first thing I did was get a resolution from, uh, you know, the, the village council. I also went to, uh, the, uh, St. Charles, um, township and got the same type of resolution. And then I went to Swan Creek Township and get a resolution for their approval of that sign. I took that to M dot, uh, engineer in Bay City and eventually three months later, we got the sign. So I, I understand the process. I'm willing to do the legwork, but it's still, it's gonna start with, you know, the village council giving me something, some ammunition to take to M dot saying that you guys are, are backing that.
This is why I'm telling you it can be done. I go up and down the turnpike in Ohio all the time. And on the turnpike where the houses are, they have signs. This is on the turnpike, no jake breaks. So I mean, it is a major thoroughfare, eighty, ninety, goes all the way across the whole country. So you can't tell me it's not possible because it's possible.
Oh, you, you.
Well, Ohio, Ohio just allows it, that's all.
Yeah.
It's their state rule. They allow them signs there.
The guys are gonna flip it on anyways, this is.
Well, yeah, you're not gonna stop it.
Screw you, but I'm just saying.
Right, right. What would you do if someone said no jake breaking? What would you do?
Flip it on.
And at four o'clock in the morning?
At four o'clock in the morning, what are you gonna do? You're gonna do it double.
Everyone knows the truckers run all by sometimes early in the morning, very early in the morning. Both these, both these guys are not out there three, four o'clock and running, enforcing that rule.
As, you know, as a trucker, let me ask if you could support this idea. You know, again, we're not out for, for blood, but even if you write them a warning citation to the point where they have to go to court, they're losing time on the road.
You betcha.
And eventually through your network of communication, other truckers are gonna say, oh, let's just not do it in St. Charles. Do it somewhere else. Don't do it in St. Charles. A sign with a warning citation, there's no law though.
The sign is possible.
There's gotta be ordinance or.
I'm working with Row Engineering to try to get the code enforcement kicked off.
Nothing wrong with putting a sign up.
But if they have a warning, a, a decibel reading, they would have an ordinance.
I'd have to have a decibel reader and we don't have the funds to purchase one of those things. There you go.
Well, we got a phone. We got an app through the phone that can read decimals. You know, we talked about that.
I, I don't know. I'd have to look into that.
We can't, we, it's something we can work on. It starts with the code side.
Something to think about.
I'm working on, uh, trying to make it fiscally responsible for planning commission to start addressing it. It will probably take hopefully half a year. I know we're looking at everything. Noise, uh, burning, grass, tall grass, weeds, dogs, the whole, the whole enchilada. Trying to keep it under ten thousand dollars.
Good luck with that.
Yeah, it's probably gonna be around twenty.
I don't live that far away from M fifty-two and I don't ever hear.
If you live, if you live east of M fifty-two, you hear it. If you west of M fifty-two, you don't hear it so much.
I'm not that far off of fifty-two west. I don't know what the difference is.
I live right off fifty-two. I hear it every morning, but I don't complain of it. I smell that my neighbor burning wires and whatever. I've, yeah, I hear all kinds of.
Well, thank you for listening. Uh, that's my point.